I'm going to be amazed that the Board of Education appoints Lisa Amson-Negli as superintendent to preside into the election and seating of the board president as we start our meeting July 1st with the reorganizational meeting at 5:45. Motion please by Heather, second by Camille, all those.
Hi.
Okay, 6-0, all right. Let's all have the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this point, we have two new board members.
Two old board members.
Correct. That have been re-elected to serve on the Highland Central School District Board of Education. So I'm going to ask Sue to raise your hand and just to repeat after me, and Tom to repeat after me.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going, yeah.
Yeah, why not?
I do solemnly swear, raise your right hand, Tom.
I do solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my position.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my position.
As board member for the Highland Central School District.
As board member for the Highland Central School District.
Board of Education.
Board of Education.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you, and again, thank you again for serving.
Sure.
At this point, I would like to ask for nominations for board president to run on the Highland Central School District.
I nominate Alan Brown.
Okay. All right, so that's Sue Gilmore nominating Alan, and Ed second. Any other nominations? No? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All right. That motion has been approved. Congratulations, Alan Brown as board president. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, yep, all right. So at this point now, I'm going to just swear in the board president.
I'll do both.
I'll do both at the same time. I also, I'm sorry, I need to also ask for nomination for the board vice president for the Highland Central School District.
I nominate Tom Miller.
Okay, anybody second? Okay. Any other nominations for board vice president? No? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, those opposed? All right, thank you. Congratulations, Tom Miller as the board vice president. So at this point, I'm going to ask you both to stand, raise your right hand, and I'm going to... Yeah. I'm going to have to go with Alan first, okay? I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my position.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my position.
As board president for the Highland Central School District Board of Education.
As board president for the Highland Central School District Board of Education.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you, Alan. Tom Miller, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay. All right. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my position.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my position.
As board vice president for the Highland Central School District Board of Education.
As board vice president for the Highland Central School District Board of Education.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
We just had to leave this. Congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations.
At this point, I'm going to have Alan Brown take over on the meeting.
Great job, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Lisa. Again, I want to thank the board for having the faith in me to continue to serve as your leader, board president, and hopefully, we can accomplish a lot more this year as we have in the past. So thank you again. Okay, we're here for a reorg meeting. First one would be appointment of district officers. Be resolved the Board of Education upon recommendation of superintendent schools approves the following district officer appointments. District clerk, Lisa Amson-Negli, stipend $7,000. District treasurer, Terry Van Ambergh, contractual school tax collector, Martha Schmidt, stipend is $4,000. Internal claims auditor, Michelle McGrath, $4,500. Our deputy treasurer is Kathleen Valentin, over the contractual. Motion please. Motion by Tom, second by Camille. Discussion. All of the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Are other appointments... I'm not going to read all these unless you want me to. I mean, they're right there in front. If you have any questions, you can go through them all. Any other appointments? Be resolved the Board of Education upon recommendation of superintendent of schools approves the following appointments. Have a motion, please. Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Any discussion? Everyone's okay? Our student activity faculty claim voter to be ten. Pretty much everyone else is...
Same with Shanna.
Yes. No questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Designations. Again, let's take this. Do you have any issues taking this as a block? Got to read through all that so that we can move through from A through J. Everyone's okay with that?
A through...
So it's A through D. Because that next one is number eight.
Oh, yeah.
It's just A through D.
A through D. I'm sorry, I apologize.
And then you can go.
A through D. You notice our board meetings for all of this are at 5:30. That's tentative unless we run into some conflicts with board members not being able to be there on time. We'll trust that today now, but it's set at 5:30. So if nobody has any questions, motion to accept. Motion by Tom, second by Heather. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. On authorizations, we could do, again, authorizations as a block from A through J.
Let's do it.
There's no changes, I don't believe, on that one. No. You're okay with that?
Yes.
Moving as a block. Can I have a motion, please?
Aye.
Motion by Tom, second by Camille. Any discussion? Or adult health insurance.
Right, so the adult health insurance, we won't be switching over until October 1st. So we had a six-month, in our contract, we had to wait six months. So we still have to adopt it, and I'll still be... There's one more meeting in September where I'll represent us, and then we'll be moving over in October to next year.
Are we on track with everything to meet that?
We're working on that.
Yes, we're on track.
We're working on it.
Yes.
Okay. Good, any other questions? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Official undertakings. Recommend the board authorize provision of employees dishonesty insurance coverage in the amount indicated. The only change there is all employees now will be 1 million. Last year and years prior were 100,000. So that's going up to 1 million. So everybody will be at 1 million. Can I have a motion to accept that? Motion by Heather, second by Ed. Any discussion?
Is that just a recommendation from the board?
Go ahead.
Hey, Lisa, do you want to talk about that?
Actually, that's what the policy has stated. Through, we have our insurance with nicer New York State insurance reciprocal, and that's what the policy has been. So what you're just approving is what we have.
So the million dollar one.
I think that might have been a typo on our draft.
Okay. Okay. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. On other items, again, our policy manual, mildew reimbursement is the normal IRS rate, typically right now at 58 cents. Subcommittee's in liaisons, we can go through that. Currently, on our audit committee, Heather, myself, and Sue. Heather and Sue, do you want to remain?
Sure.
Good. Does anyone else want to switch up this year and move to the audit committee? If not, I'll still stay on. Our support service committee is myself, Ed, and Tom. I'd like to remain on there. Is that... Everyone okay with the three current board members to remain on that committee?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Negotiations, as if required. Currently, HTA is Sue, Heather, and Camille. You guys want to remain on that committee?
Yes.
Anyone else want to jump in? Good.
Yep.
Okay. So Sue, Heather, and Camille. HSA is myself, Sue, and Mike. Okay, Sue, with that?
Yes.
Remaining on there? Anyone else want to jump in on the HSA?
I want to keep it and do it.
Want to do that one too? Okay. So you'll replace me. So it will be Tom, Sue, and Mike. And HAA is Sue, Tom, and Mike. Anybody want to switch up on that?
I can jump on that if you want to leave Tom or whoever.
HAA?
No, I'm on HAA.
You're going to replace Tom? Okay. So HAA is Tom, Sue, Ed, Mike.
Wait.
No?
Sue, Ed, Mike.
Sue, Ed, Mike. Okay, our board liaison is Austin County School Boards Association was Sue. You'll remain on that, Sue.
Yes.
Okay.
And next liaison, you are Mike.
Yes.
CSE, CPSE, Tom and Ed. Good with that? And PTA, we have Mike, Ed, and Camille.
All are recording to do that.
Okay. Audit Committee Charter, that's okay.
Alan, I think you need to read a resolution for the policy manual. Yeah, I think we have to...
Okay, I was going to... I was going to jump back to that and then do the other ones as a block.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Got it.
Audit Committee Charter, Committee on Special Education, okay, so we can move.
I think there might be a question on Audit Committee Charter.
Right. You can bring that up, special, separate discussion. All right, we'll move back to policy manual. Be resolved the Board of Education re-adopts all policies in the Highland Central School District Policy Manual in effect as of June 30th, 2019. Add a July 1st, 2019 reorg meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Tom. Discussion. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. We'll take other items from B through...
Where do you go, B and N?
B through N. N is a change from last year, I agree with that.
Yeah, I can explain though.
Okay. We're okay taking the balance from B through N as a block?
Let's do it.
And then we'll pull, for discussion, the Audit Committee Charter. That'll be a separate resolution. Okay? So can I have a motion to take B through N with the exception of D?
Move it.
So, and... So, and.
So there are a few changes, Mr. President and Board, in J. We did raise up the instructional subrate by $5, just so we can keep in line with our surrounding community. As it is difficult to get substitute teachers, so it's $90 a day for instructional substitute rate for uncertified, $120 for the certified. And then the under N, we raised up the for scorekeeper time clock rate. That went up $5 at each level.
Okay. Any other questions with those?
Of course, the school lunch prices go up 10 cents a year, or this year.
And we hold on the adult much as through what?
We're waiting for the guidance from the John Trishing website. It usually comes out later in August.
Any other questions? All of the favor? Opposed, so carried. And on the Audit Committee, be resolved the Board of Education re-adopts the Audit Charter, Audit Committee Charter in effect of July 1, 2019 reorg meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Motion by Sue, second by Heather. Discussion. Lisa, you might want to go through that or...
So my question was, I just remember discussing just including language to say that training members generally, the board members are still hold the majority on it, just in case we have another board community member interested. And we can still adopt this and then adjust activities. So at least that's us to the point where we can invite the home person who has expressed interest.
I'm not sure, can we have more than our form of board members on any committee? I don't know what the school law says for that. We have to...
No, I thought...
What you're saying, having two, right? Like we had in the past, I think we had three.
Right, we had two. I only ever remember having two. But I think we said as long as there was more board members than community members was what we had always faced it on.
Yeah, because there's no decision being made in the committee.
Right.
There's no discussion.
Okay. So do you want to table this until the next board meeting? And I will change the verbiage.
However you want to do it. Do you want to just leave it here so that the one... Do we have a more... Do we have a...
Well, we can change it now and we can vote on it.
Yeah.
Make that change.
Okay, so the change that was placed before the board was under membership. Community member, one member of the community shall be entitled to serve on the audit committee. How would you like to change that? No more than two?
Up to two.
Up to two?
Up to two.
Up to two?
Yeah, we had two.
Okay.
Members of the community, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
As amended. Audit Committee Charter, as amended. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think that's good for reorg.
Great job, New York.
I'm glad you have the time for scorekeeper and cost pressing.
Game, basketball game is like an hour and a half. How long is a basketball?
Basketball can be anywhere from an hour and 10 minutes to an hour and a half.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not, I think, you know, I just, we get our subrate, $90 per day versus $50 per day. It seems, eight-hour shift versus a one-and-a-half-hour shift.
You got to really pay attention though in the game, much more than you...
Put it down, not to...
You got to pay attention every second.
That's true.
I do.
Yeah.
The chaperone rate is 45. So we were paying the same for someone to do the clock as the chaperone rate.
Right.
So that's...
My intention, my...
Yeah, no, I am scared of that.
The scorekeeper.
Yes, no, I understand.
It's $100 for the substitute teacher.
Yeah.
It's non-certified, so...
Yeah, but the eight-hour shift. It's up to New York State, January shifts, $50 an hour.
They're a wage.
Yeah. We're trying to limit each other's students.
How can we, how can we get that out, you know?
You can, that's...
Why is that so horrible?
You can, make an ours you want. We can discuss it.
Yeah, you just bring it up that, it doesn't have to be changed now, right? It's something we should be aware of.
Yes.
This is...
Because we want quality people watching.
Commensurate with the region, but...
Well, I think a commensurate is terrible.
But I know we have a way to work in...
It's one of the reasons it's hard to get it off.
January 1st, so...
It's terrible.
Just putting it on the radar.
Okay. I like it.
The painting.
Too confusing.
Yes.
Okay, now we'll open our meeting up to our record of monthly meeting. And we'll open it up to public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment. And we'll go to acceptance of reports. Be resolved the Board of Education upon recommendation of superintendent approves and acknowledges reviewing of following reports. Board of Education meeting minutes, May 21st, 2019, and our treasurer's report, May 2019. Can I have a motion, please? Do you have something, Heather?
Yeah. Can we call the board meeting minutes and table that for the next meeting?
Yeah, we're going to table that for the next meeting.
Sure. Okay, any questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, we'll table the Board of Education meeting minutes until the next meeting, and we'll vote on the acceptance of the treasurer's report. All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I need to abstain.
Nothing bad. I just did not read the agenda, and sorry.
Under personnel. You okay taking personnel? Probably a lot of conversation, but taking personnel as a block from A through I. All right, and then we do have some new appointments here with us this evening. We'll recognize those individuals after we...
You have an addendum as well. You also have an addendum, J. Um, yeah, sorry about that. So there are three additions on that addendum for appointments.
I add J.
So I don't know if you want to do it separate, if you want to include that in your block.
Let's include J in the block. We'll include J in the block. Okay. I have, under the coaching appointments, I'll have some no votes here, but I don't want to pull it out separately. I'll just make that an announcement. These are no votes of four. Okay, we're good to take appointments as a block from A through J?
Yeah, just for the question. I just want to follow up with a question.
Okay, yeah, no, questions are fine.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept personnel as a block from A through J?
Move it.
Move by Sue, second by Heather. Discussion.
I have one, I have one question. Am I allowed to name names, or just...
Sure, they're on the agenda.
Oh, yes, of course, they're on the agenda.
Okay, I have the varsity winter cheerleading head coach, Dana DeStacy.
Yes.
But I see her going out on child brewing league.
Right, so I met with the, thank, it's an excellent question, I was going to bring that up. So I met with the HTA president. So she will get paid up until, so she'll get, you know, be, it'll be prorated.
Oh, okay.
She's going to get paid for, because she's not going out if things all time right. She'll be there for most of the football season. So she'll get paid up until that point, and then the volunteer first will just, will finish up the season.
And will get that.
Yeah.
They'll get that remainder of the segment.
And then she is expected to be back in the winter before the winter cheerleading starts.
Thank you.
And that policy will hold through the year for any additional people?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah. Keep track of that.
All right. My question is, you have several, I think we've got seven positions, eight positions that are, that were hired right now. How many of those people are in attendance?
So we have four people in attendance right now. These were all done, we wrapped, you know, we were literally just still wrapping up interviews on Friday, and some of the people were interviewing other schools, and a few of these that were appointing just told us this morning they accepted the positions. They needed time to finish up their interviewing and decide to accept or decline our positions. We certainly had a few people who did decline because they took jobs at other schools. So that's why we have the late paperwork on some of the appointments. A few of the people already had plans.
I just want to see the...
And some people had, they were free tomorrow night, but weren't free tonight. But we will get those people to a meeting so you can meet them.
Want to be able to see who were...
Right, so we can bring, we can invite them to the next board meeting, the next two board meetings if they can make those meetings. If not, then the ones attempt. Okay, we'll make a note of that.
Good. Question regarding to the open gym volunteers. Don't recall seeing them in the past.
Right, so that's something I wanted to just clean up from the past. So over the summer, we have coaches who come in and just, and open up the weight room. Or they're... And it is open to everyone. But to keep us covered for insurance purposes, we really need to appoint someone as a volunteer so that if anything happened, because before that, if anything happened, really, we, you know, we would be a little bit in trouble, it wouldn't be covered.
Is it a position in other districts?
Right, in other districts, probably over the summer it is. I'm going to...
Is it in a year?
Yeah, no, I, no, I know that. We were in, Sarah and I are in discussion with HTA, and we're going to bring that to the board probably in September to suggest that since we've invested a lot of money in our weight room to have a new stipend for... probably in September to suggest that, since we've invested a lot of money in our weight room to have a new stipend for fall, winter, and spring, uh, you know, gym supervisor, we'd call it, but it's for the weight room. Because now they do aerobics in there, they do yoga, it's not just lifting weights. And it's not open all the time, it's only open now, and people kinda open it. So I would, I wanna get it more regular, so it's open Monday through Friday.
We need super vision.
Yes, we need supervision there.
Train super vision.
Yes.
Other question, is it the same thing with summer drivers? I don't remember that we.
Yes, so that's where we're just appointing anyone who potentially might be doing a trip over the summer, so. Because technically their employment is over on June thirtieth, um, so really to do, to cross the page without the eyes, they should be appointed for those summer.
And that's for the summer school and the summer camp?
Summer school and any other runs.
Any special one, or any trips anyone has, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. And with the coaching, is there, um, there's an evaluation system in place for coaches to continue, if you're planning? Yes. Yep, Mr. Alfonso and I are still reviewing all those, and then I'll be meeting in September with any coaches who, you know, we felt were a little need some areas of improvement.
With the coaching positions, I, I know you were, I mean, I know this year JV baseball, uh, wasn't in play for the, uh, low numbers. What, what can we do to encourage more participation in our sports program? And, and this is gonna go back to probably a speech I gave a bunch of years ago, is are our coaches, especially in, in, in some of the programs that have, uh, community activities? Our soccer, our football, our lacrosse, our baseball? Do they get involved in those theater programs to try to move these kids in a direction to participate? Uh, we offer a, a variety of sports programs, I mean, we added swimming, we added, I believe, winter track.
Gymnasiums.
We added all these programs to, to, to benefit the children, our, our volunteer community, but yet, a lot of them don't wanna participate in some of these sports. So, what can we do to entice the kids to come out, the student athletes to come out and participate? If it need, if our, we need our coaching staff to get involved in the theater, theater program, to try to encourage the, the involvement? Maybe that's something that we should pass on to our coaches, and we would like to see that happen.
Well, I would also think that kids are going to be attracted to, uh, being involved if the coach is, uh, if the coach is good. I think they're going to want to gravitate to that person.
True, and it, and it, you know, I, I know, you know, your surrounding school districts that have successful programs year in and year out, um, that attracts the students. We, and this is no reflection on our athletic director, I mean, you can't help the kids perform well, I mean, it's up to the coaches to try to develop these kids at a, at a young age, and I think some of our surrounding districts do that quite well, where they get involved in the theater programs, or they try to find the right people to get involved in those theater programs to help their cause. So, I, I just, hopefully, you know, these coaches are, are listening to our speech, or mine, and show that enthusiasm to go out there and, and instill in those in those young programs to what their involvement, what their benefit could be later on in their high school career, or modified career, middle school career.
The athletic director, no, the athletic director and I have been discussing this, and I'm gonna be attending the coaching meetings at the beginning of each season um, to voice some of these concerns and give some suggestions to coaches to kinda get, get them moving a little bit more. But I, I do understand and, uh, we are gonna do something about it, or attempt to at least.
So.
No, go ahead.
So, so at this point in time, as it says, upon recommendation of the superintendent, um,
I'm recommending people.
This is, this is the, yes, this, you, 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 you are recommending that this is, this is a good list of votes to, uh, have our kids, uh, in a best, best sporting position that they can be in. Yes, you are.
Yes, I am. Also remember, there's not a long line of people, so, you know, so mostly, this is it, you know, this is the person you're voting for, there's no, you know,
Unless we have.
There's no other interest, right.
There is.
Uh, we did note, though, not to be, you know, in the event, the wording is a little different, that there has to be participation to warrant the team. Because in the past, we didn't have that wording, so you may not, may or may not realize, if there wasn't a JV team, the JV coach was getting paid, and then there really were being an assistant coach to the varsity coach. Now, if there's not enough students to warrant a team, that coach is not gonna get paid to strike them.
Good, as it should be.
Right, yeah.
Let's go to Alfonso. Can I ask you a question? Um, we had that situation twice this year with the boys', um, soccer, as well as, um, boys' baseball, JV. So, just a question, if we happen to start the season, we're two weeks in, we realize we don't have enough, then that coach would be removed at that point, and it would just get prorated for.
They get prorated, yes.
'Cause I know that question has already come to.
That should motivate them to get kids out to play.
Can I ask you, this is a bit candid, but the, um, it has come up in years past, and, and, and the superintendent mentions there's not a great line of people lining up for coaching positions. And I know in the unit that stands, uh, a lot of them don't wanna step on each other's toes, and really know that so-and-so is going for this position, I don't wanna come in and, and, you know, offend them. Have you, uh, in your position, been able to nurture others to come and step up, or, or you find yourself getting to that point where you feel comfortable doing that? If you see a coach, you know, say the same, uh, say it's something where in the, the Tiddlywigs coach is, um, is, we find that she's not he or she, or however gender identified, does not, uh, come up to what we feel are our expectations, would you feel comfortable, you know, seeking out among the unit someone who might, you might be able to groom for that position?
We, we send out the, um, appointment, or applications, whatever, to the HTA and to the public, and then whatever comes back. Um, as far as the HTA members, um, I can tell you in the past, some, like you said, would not wanna step, step on someone's, on toes. We don't tell anybody who applied, we leave that packet together, so when somebody applies, or somebody else comes and they ask if something's open, we say, yes, it's open. So we don't say, oh, this person already applied. Now, the discussion outside of the athletic office with other people, I really don't know what happens there. But as far as the athletic office, we welcome everybody, and we encourage all of them to, to apply for any position. And then we try to evaluate from there and pass on to the superintendent.
I, I guess, and it's not that, I, I'm not, and this isn't gaming the system, but it truly is seeking out qualified candidates, and sometimes in the role of athletic director, that might be something, and I know, I'm, I know you have your hands full with a lot, in a sense, but it also, I think, for the, the wellbeing programs to, to keep your eye out, if you're finding that people aren't applying, that if you could find a way to encourage room, I, it may just be something as simple as telling somebody what they need to qualify as a coach, and how you think that they'd be a really good coach, you know?
Right.
It just, in order to, it, it, it's a difficult thing, like I said, when, when only one person's applying for a coach, year after year after year, and nobody else is applying, I wonder, as Sue mentions, is, are we serving the children the best way in allowing that to happen? Or are we just simply, you know, keeping the wheel turning in the same way?
And I only say, the only reason I, the only reason I object to you is because it affect, it direct, directly affects your program.
So maybe, there's only, you know, in the whole, in all three seasons, what's the percentage of HTA, uh, coaches, Mr.?
Um, I can tell you this past year, um, don't quote me on it, but I believe the number of HTA members who coached, there's only like fifteen or sixteen.
Only fifteen, and there's about eighteen.
That coached, I understand that some of them coached two seasons or three seasons, and I believe the percentages are around forty-five percent that were HTA members.
Right, the sixty percent is non-HTA people.
There's, there's a lot of new people on this.
And there's a lot of new people, and we're, and, and when we're interviewing people, you know, if we see it, we jump right on that. If we think they're, if they made it to Mrs. Dunne Lemick and I, that means that they're among the finalists. And, uh, you know, sometimes if you have two equal candidates, but one coach is, girl swimming, whatever, oh, you got it.
Right, the other people, very.
That's a reality, so we are grooming, we have some of our younger teachers now who are coaches.
I just, I, I, I guess I'm just saying, there's nothing wrong with healthy competition, and I think, you know, if our unit won't do it, I think we could find ways to encourage them.
Right.
All right, great, glad you brought that up.
Thank you.
Well, we might see that, because we have a lot of new people, it might help.
Not that many new, I'm gonna say there's about six new ones out of about sixty positions.
Question on the gymnastics, I know we share with other districts, is that our portion of it, or do we have our own coach and that's?
That, that portion is divided by, um, the three districts. So, the portion that's on here, we pay that person, and then the other districts would pay us, so.
Oh, okay.
It was a bit sorb.
So, our out of pocket is like a third of that?
At the end, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. And then, um, I know it's not noted on here, but there are other positions that are still vacant.
Yes, in the fall, we have varsity football assistant coach, varsity girls swim head coach. In the winter, we have varsity boys swim head coach, varsity boys and girls indoor track head coach, varsity gymnastics head coach. In the spring, still vacant, varsity boys and girls track shared assistant, varsity girls track head coach, modified girls track head coach, and modified girls lacrosse head coach. So those are still these, all the open positions.
Three soft questions.
But for the fall, we only have the two, varsity football assistant and varsity girls swim head coach.
Another discussion? Okay, to, uh, take the appointments from A through A through I, uh, J, sorry, J through J. Anyone pulling out anyone that you wanna, any, any area that you wanna take separately? We do have a, a retirement.
Yes.
On the bus drive of fifteen years. Is that, that?
Yes, I was gonna mention that one, please, but.
Okay, question. That came after, I mean, what?
Yes, it did.
Yes.
All right. All in favor of A through J on the personnel?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'm opposed to, uh, on our coaching appointments, our varsity boys golf, our varsity boys basketball, and our varsity girls golf, which currently is being coached by, uh, Mike Millen. Any other objections, benchings? So carry.
Okay, did one to mention a few things, Mr. President, Board of Education. But certainly I want to thank Frank Corbett, uh, for fifteen years that served as the buster on a fan, you know, a private person, and, you know, intentionally waiting till after that last June meeting and got it in, 'cause she didn't wanna a lot of the, ruh-rah, but, uh, we wish her luck. I think she's gonna be following her dream, and she bought some land up in the Adirondacks and must open up a barbecue restaurant. So I told her, let me know when it's open, and we're heading up there. I know. Certainly we want to wish best of luck to Linda Keach. She did, resigned as our chorus teacher at the high school, but she took an administrative position in the music area in a, in a neighboring district. I'm sure she's gonna be excellent, and we thank her for all her contributions to the music program. We do have four of our people here, I'm gonna have to have them stand, introduce themselves, and tell them what, tell the board what position they are filling, so we'll come right here.
Um, I'm Christine Hughes, I was appointed as the STEM elementary teacher.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
How's it going, my name is Dan Somerfeld, I'll be teaching elementary school as well.
Fourth grade?
Third grade.
Third grade.
Good to hear.
Hi, my name's Kristen Bouvet, and I'll be teaching the elementary school as well, fourth grade.
Hi, I'm Alana Garnica, and I'll be filling in for Mrs. DeStacy for the ENL position.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, again, on behalf of the board for our little funding, congratulations, good luck, and hope you have a successful career here in Highland.
Yes.
Okay, business and operations. Budget transfer, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approve the following budget transfer for the two thousand eighteen's school year as follows, budget transfer one-one-two-zero-one for sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Budget transfer one-one-three-six for fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Budget transfer one-one-two-eight for fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty. Budget transfer one-one-four-zero-zero for eighteen thousand dollars. Budget transfer one-one-seven-four-seven for twelve thousand dollars, and budget transfer one-one-seven-eight-nine for fifty-six thousand three hundred. Can I have a motion, please?
Seven-nine-eight.
Motion.
Seven-nine-eight.
One-one-seven-nine-eight. You said seven.
One-one-seven-nine-eight. I said eight-nine?
Okay.
Uh, motion by Heather. Seconded by Ed. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Budget increase, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, except for donation from the Highland Host Company Number One in the amount of five hundred dollars for the Highland Middle School band program. Furthermore, be it resolved, based upon the recommendation of superintendent, schools, the Board of Education, approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget increase for five hundred dollars, which will go into the appropriation line item of A two-one-one-zero-five-zero-one-zero-two, two-one-three-eight for five hundred dollars, and it's the revenue side of A two-seven-o-five. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, seconded by Ed. Discussion.
So our, uh, middle school band has been playing for the, uh, Highland Host Company Number One for their parades. In the past, they, I know they had some other groups to it, but so now, we're the sole, um, band in there, and I really just wanna thank the Highland Host Company, don't worry, their generosity for support of our students and our band program, uh, paying, uh, you know, making that donation, so it would certainly go away here.
So you have the official band of the Highland Host.
They are the official band of Highland Host Company Number One.
The Twentieth Century Limited, I believe, was around, it was a, a local-based band that folded up this past year, or did they? They always, you know, they get paid.
Very talented.
Yeah.
So, the middle school stepped up, and if they felt that it was appropriate to, you know, the donation towards your program for. Okay, uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. National School Program Agreement, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approve the attached agreement for the Highland Central School District to participate in a national school lunch program, school breakfast program, and/or special milk program for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, seconded by Tom. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. Sarah?
Um, I'll be quick, since it's the end of the school year, uh, we had three great end-of-year ceremonies, the moving up for the fifth grade, then moving up for the eighth grade, and the high school graduation this past week. I want to extend a huge thank you to all of the staff who helped put together all three of those programs, but, of course, a very special thank you to everyone who really stepped up for the high school graduation. That we had the little storm interruption, but, uh, you know, it was really, literally all hands. That we had the little storm interruption, but, uh, you know, it was really, literally all hands on deck, the deck being the stage, and got everything off, kept people relatively calm, brought them all back, and then ended with a beautiful graduation. So again, a big thank you to everyone who helped make that successful. And of course, it's a great week. It's always good to see all of our students excited to, to move on to the next thing.
We, we had a lot of staff members that, like you said, did step up.
They did.
And, and in all actuality, I've had our future moving up, second orders, and high school graduation. I would like to have discussions with our representative, um, the unions, to encourage that people do show up at the appropriate event, you know. It's, it's good, it's a good community thing to see, um, kids like to see it. And, uh, case in point, it came in handy also.
Okay.
You know, for your friends, so I don't think it's a lot to ask of people, you know.
I'd say I thought the rain delay was handled incredibly. That was...
Yes, it was a great team effort.
Absolutely. That was great. I, I thought it was a great sign of who we are in my, very proud of it. That's all I have for now. We're starting summer work, maybe more in August.
Good, good.
Yes, Mr. President. I want to echo the sentiment of my esteemed colleague. Uh, it really was an incredible night, but it was all the nights, and it is, it's everyone. Uh, so it's hard, I don't want to point one person out, but I will, I am gonna break that rule. There, a group, I mean, Mr. Miller's, entire buildings and ground staff. It, it's an incredible amount of work, uh, just setting up the gym for the, uh, the middle school elementary moving up ceremonies, and there's a change from one night to another. Uh, and then just all the coordination with each of the building's staff for the different events was just incredible. It's only that night, just the fact that we got everything in, and they got everything dried off, and I mean, the, the parents aren't really back out there before we even said we were ready to go out, because it was all dry and ready to go. So thank you to Mr. Miller and his whole staff. We had some great news. Uh, we mentioned, we had sent an email out to the board about this. I just got the letter today. This is from Iris Schwartz, Assistant Commissioner. Dear Superintendent, on behalf of the Commissioner and the Board of Regents, I write to congratulate you on your district having a school that has been designated as a recognition school. This school is among those in New York State that have higher academic achievement, growth, and graduation rate, and have made progress during the 2017, 2018 school year. Encloses a certificate that celebrates the success of your district in supporting excellence in education. We applaud your efforts and look forward to assisting your district in having all of its students achieve college and career-ready standards. Sincerely, Iris Schwartz. And this is our plaque that we received from the State Department. So excellent job, and again, this is, uh, it's all teachers, K through twelve, it's all staff, K through twelve. Every person is a part of that, you know, that student crossing the stage, right? The moment they come in, uh, to the moment they leave, it's really, it's everyone, it's a team effort. So thank you, everyone.
Keep it up there, Bon Jovi.
So that's all I have for now, Mr. President.
Thank you.
All right, under Board of Education, new business plus borrowing bond resolution. Bond resolution as presented to the board at this meeting dated July one, 2019. Board of Education, Highland Central School District, authorizing not to exceed four hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and forty-six aggregate principal amount of serial generation, general obligation bonds to finance purchase of school buses and vehicles at an estimated maximum cost of four hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. Levy of tax and annual installments of payment thereof, expenditure of such sum for such purpose, determining other matters in connection therewith. Any S R, Board clerk, to take the roll call quick?
Yes. You either, on the S.
Let me give you a motion first. Motion. Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Roll call, please.
Okay. Just state A or N after I mention your name. Heather Welch.
Aye.
Camille Adoma.
Aye.
Ed Mizell.
Aye.
Sue Gilmore.
Yes.
Tom Miller.
Aye.
And Alan Barone.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Okay. Agreement between Highland Central School District and Legal Counsel. Be it resolved, Board of Education, based upon a recommendation of superintendent, approve the attached 2019, 2020 proposal for legal services between Highland Central School District and Thomas, Drawin, Wapson, Pedigree, and Mailey LLP as presented at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Tom. Discussion?
So this was, uh, I presented this back to the board in late May, I believe. Uh, so we'll be re-upping the slight increase in the hours that are covered. So that we, we should be fine, so, you know, we wouldn't anticipate going over the hours. Uh, we did have some, you know, continued negotiations this past year. So we don't anticipate as much, I don't think, but, uh, we want to stay under those hours. It'll be less expensive in the end.
Have they been, uh, have they been very responsive?
Yes, they have.
No, to a war.
Yes. Right?
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our first reading of, of Policy seven five one one, Unionization of Students, first reading. Everyone have not between to go through that?
No.
You wanna hold it for a second reading?
Yes, I'm sorry.
So all of these being for a second reading?
So just let me give a little bit of background on that. Sure all of you are aware that the New York State Legislature, just before they went into a summer recess, um, passed legislation saying that there's no longer a religious exemption for immunizations, and that starts immediately upon passage of the, uh, the legislation. So, so this will just bring our policy up to date with state law. And, and those are in effect, starting with our summer academy, in fact. Uh, we don't have a large number up to...
So maybe it should be fine, uh, just to...
It's up to you, but I, we, yeah, there, it's, it's not a whole lot of choice in this. Like, we don't have to make much of a decision on it. It is state law. Yeah, and, and I, there's a marked up copy. She did, she did, uh, uh, reword more for ease of reading and, and take some things out in and out here and there, but...
Just out of, uh, intellectual curiosity, more vaguely intellectual curiosity. What, uh, so should a family, uh, on religious grounds refuse to immunize? We, we are refusing to allow them to population. What do we legally become responsible for them? As far as education, should they so refuse?
They would probably have to homeschool.
I was just throwing that, I guess every...
Just, yeah. We do not, I mean, their, their requirement for coming to our schools is to have their immunization. So if they choose not to do that...
I'm just curious, we have...
Then it's their decisions to not...
I'm curious to understand legally on that, I know that this is the state's mandate to be here. But, yeah, at what point do, yeah, they have to accommodate?
We would not be required to accommodate their education, from my understanding.
Okay, so if they're, if they don't meet the power requirements, we don't have to...
Yes. That's a fuzzy thing. I mean, we also, though, have to ensure that students are getting educated, so, you know, it's, it's...
Hence the intellectual curiosity.
Yes, but it's, um, it, it would go into other hands.
Right. So there seems that it gets challenged in the state.
It will.
So basically, nobody really knows.
Well, I mean, from the, from the, from the law, this, the, the district doesn't have the responsibility to educate if the, if the parents are not doing, but what would happen then is it would go to CPS and educational neglect and, you know, go through a line that way.
Yeah, I mean, not having to...
Yeah, and, and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to curry, but I'm just curious as to what occurs.
We have this requirement for our students. Uh, we can't make that same requirement for employees?
Employees need to be, yes.
Hmm, I don't, I don't think, yeah, because we're, all the businesses gone through this, you can't handle it.
I don't think so, but this is, this is just for students.
No, I understand, I'm just...
And it's a reaction to some of the outbreaks that is in the class.
Right.
No, I understand, it's from a, yeah, a, 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 it makes sense, but then, yeah, this, this, this slightly lying is...
I mean, it was kind of a fucking...
Yeah, but I think that was a, if you have any...
I don't believe they could go.
Your question? Yeah, I, I comment on that, with, with the town, with our summer fund program. We always had to have the immunization records. This year, definitely have to have them. There's no exemptions, but the county, through the state, also made all staff have the immunization records. I got them tomorrow for booster shots, so.
I know, many private, many private colleges and universities always require it as a, but they have that leverage. I mean, so nowhere does it public.
I'll check with legal on that, just to see.
That's a great area.
Because I mean, it was...
I mean, they could find, I think they tried to tell you.
Pretty, uh...
I'd be curious to see what they say.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So we'll hold it for second reading? You're okay with that?
Yeah. And that's the only operation part.
Let me hold it.
And legislation, Trump's policy, or, or copper, either way.
Okay.
Better than having users.
That could be much longer conversation.
Orthopedics Associates, be it resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, approve the attached agreement between Highland Central School District and Orthopedics Associates of Dutchess County, P.C., between the agreed time of August thirty-first, 2019, to June thirtieth, 2020, as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Ed, second by Camille.
This is for our trainer.
My old reports is actually very good.
Yes.
Per Camille's...
Exactly.
Very impressive.
Yes, and we'll, you know, all, we anticipate have the same trainer back for this one.
We increase, this is, where we increase the funding, is it just because of the contractual? Or are we getting extra time?
No, this increase can, because contractual, yeah.
It was an introductory rate.
Yes.
Yes.
That's it.
Yeah, that was the introductory rate.
Thank you.
That individual, Frank, is here pretty much like Monday through Friday and/or Saturday.
And/or Saturday, and I believe she would start August nineteenth. I noticed it's the thirty-first, but I don't know, I'll check with that. She was here this past year, she was there in the preseason.
Hold on.
It's the non-travel position also, right? Won't go, just for home.
August first, it should commence.
Okay, okay.
Term of agreement commencing August first.
Not thirty-first, August first.
Terminating June thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay, great. We'll amend that, August first.
And I believe when she does away events, and she does, but she gets reimbursed from, from Orthopedics, from pathology. But there are, there were some sectional events that she did.
That's the, yeah, that's...
On varsity, I mean, yes.
Well, I mean, we're hoping, actually now, a lot of districts do have trainers, so they're available, and our team travels to another school, just like she would be available for those teams at, at our home.
Versus varsity.
But not all.
Not all, correct. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.
Second, I'm sorry, was there a...
Which Pixalot, you submit? Be resolved, Board of Education, upon recommendation of superintendent, approve the attached agreement which will serve as confirmation of the involvement between Highland High School and the NFHS Network School Broadcast Program as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please, by Ed, second by Camille?
So this is something I've been working on for a little while, uh, with our attorneys and then with, with Ms. Alfons, so, uh, section nine was, uh, presentation was done by this company, Pixalot, and they're combined with the National Federation of High Schools, so the, you know, the feds, the federation, uh, events. So what this is, uh, and I can pass this around. Uh, section nine was offered free of charge to have initially, normally it's five thousand dollars. So these are cameras. They will, there'll be one in the gym and one out on the football field. If we want more than that, we'd have to buy them. What these cam, what the, give the ability to do is, the coaches at the beginning of each season will send in their game schedule. This camera will turn on automatically, it's all, it's all remote, and it films the game in like ESPN quality. Uh, it's an algorithm, so it follows the movement of the ball. So no matter what the game is, whether it's volleyball, basketball, and it films the entire game, and then it's live streamed. Now, the, the catch is, why would they do this? So this is, uh, for the parents who want to watch it live, there is a monthly fee. Uh, it's about twenty...
Twenty-something.
Twenty-some dollars for a month, or you can just do the whole season for forty dollars. It is free after seventy-two hours to watch. It is also free for any non-athletic events. So like our graduation, um, or anything else in the gym, if we wanted to, you know, film something else, an academic event, the band, the, the, the scholarship, concerts, that would all just be streamed live.
Who retains the rights to the footage?
So it's our footage. We retain all the rights to the footage, so our attorney, that's why it took so long. Our attorneys went through it with a fine-tooth comb, and made a lot of, made, made some changes. There is a handful of districts who, who are, that said, "Yeah, no, we, we want to do this." Um, so it gives the opportunity, you know, the, the pictures, you know, we have so many working parents where if you, you can't make the game because you are traveling, you're working, so now you can be working with sneaking on your desk if you're watching your child's game. Uh, and if you're, for other schools, if your, if your child's playing an away game at a school that has this also, you have, if you have the subscriptions for, it's not just for our school, it's for that season, for that sport. So you can wa, now watch a game if you can't make it to. I mean, if you, if you can't afford the amount, uh, you know, you can just, you could wait. If you totally missed the game, now you can wait. This will take the place of now, coaches don't have to worry about finding someone to film the game and cataloging. This is all, a coach now can go to that, boom, 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 pick out, uh, you know, Alan Barone scoring that touchdown, and then send it to that college coach. So this, this will help with, um, you know, college recruitment, uh, so we can get the films professionally done right to the coaches, right to college. They also can, obviously, there's changes, so when we have weather changes, you just update and you send it, boom, and the camera's all set. If a coach wants to film a practice at the beginning of the season, they're working on a particular skill, and these can pretty much do anything you can imagine. Uh, so if the coach is on, in the gym, let's say he's on half the court, working on, you know, one particular skill, doesn't really need to work on that other one, it will only film the one side. I mean, so it truly has so many uses, and the coach can use that for, you know, think of a hot, you know, I think of as a track coach, I would want to have it filming my high jumper, working out and practicing, so then I can show them what they're doing, correct or incorrect, and make the adjustments.
We, we, um, like you said, we own the rights to it.
We own the rights to it, yes.
So another coach from another district could not access that?
No, they cannot, so we have our own private, yeah, we'll have our own private site, yeah. You can watch it, but you, you don't have access to that footage.
Is that, we, we, it's, we retain rights, so if there should be something you want to pull, if there's any, we...
And if there's, uh, you know, if there's anything, there is a slight delay, um, a couple-minute delay. Uh, so if anything ever happened at a game where we don't want that being streamed live, the person in charge of the facility at the time would have to remember, and they either make a call or there's a way to just hand it to the company. They, they'll do it. Uh, I think there's someone on call twenty-four hours a day. You can call Pixalot, and this is, you know, "High School, please turn off our camera." Boom, they'll turn it off. If there was...
He's got, they got a similar credential or code or something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, there is. I, I'm a simple...
It's probably a password.
Yes, yes.
Prime one or whatever.
Yes, no, 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 yeah.
The memo doesn't, says, the cost doesn't include installation.
No, so the, the costs are, the cost, the only cost... No, so the, the cost are, the cost, the only cost to us is that we have to, we have to install it. Um, so that's about fifteen hundred dollars in cost they estimate to install this.
Now, uh
But we, they've spoken with Carol, they've spoken with our techies, um, the company, this, obviously, Frank and I met with them, and everyone has come to, oh, yeah, no, this is great.
Damage and, uh
If it's damaged, uh, they replace it for free. So if a ball hits it, or if it gets struck by lightning outside, the, the company replaces it.
So this is only things, only events that are on-site?
Correct.
So we would have potentially three, three to four locations outside?
So we, right, so this is just the gym and the football field. If we want to, I would think, my, for both, you know, let's see how it goes, you know, roll it out, and then if we wanted to, you could put one in the auditorium, you could put one on baseball fields. But, you know, the camera at the football field can only do the football field.
I don't know, there's too many hot people crying foul on that one.
Well, just to find out how it works.
I think we're gonna, we have to pile it at first, you know?
Yeah, we have, we have to have an attorney because football is a fall season, and then
Football is a fall season.
Football, soccer, yeah.
Yeah, football, pro, soccer would be
Not be able to put one over at the park, that's town property.
I think if we find it successful and functional, and we, and if, if that's all, then we should look at getting
Well, I agree, yeah.
And we don't have an obligation to our parents and our taxpayers to make an announcement or just say, this is where we're going. Uh, you know, that kind of recording.
They sign
When we roll it out, right, once, once they, once this gets done, then we need to have a whole rollout of it, and the company, uh, Pixalot and, uh, Federation's gonna work with us on how you actually roll it out to the public. And there's a whole, you know, advertising campaign to tell the people about
Every year, the students sign a waiver, a waiver for application programs and licenses, and, but I don't know
I guess you're gonna have to, at, at any event, you could have any camera, personal, a street recording.
Right. And we're not, well, so to say, we're not really posting it someplace, but we are. It just is on that site rather than on, you know, it's not like we're putting it on Facebook.
We do submit out the waivers every year, right, for the students?
We do.
Yeah, the parents are, yeah. They opt out, basically. So unless we get something from someone, we assume that they're buying these.
If we find this is successful and affordable, would you then be able to equip the other fields for the spring?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you might be, could.
In the locations, yeah. Just want to make sure, fair and equitable.
Yes, absolutely.
What is the, uh, the revenue sharing? It looks like it's after
That's a, that's a, uh, right, that is a, an option. That's not something that I would be in favor of. So that is, you know, basically, so for, if it's thirty dollars a month, you can charge forty, and we get ten dollars. I'm not looking to make money on this. I'm looking to, you know, enhance our program, to, you know, give parents more, you know, increased access, and to improve it for college recruiting.
So I'm just trying to picture a game. Okay, the coach is at the game, of course. So let's say something does happen, so someone has to be there right by the camera to make that call, to turn it off. But is that an additional person?
I, you know, it would probably, it would probably have to be the head coach. We'll have to come up with a protocol that if something happened, this is what you have to do.
This is my question about the rights to the footage, because should something happen, we can pull it off, even though we can pull it off. It, it may go out live stream, but we'd be able to, yeah, anything.
Yeah, just
Was it about five minutes delay?
Yeah. Right, right now, you have some parents filming the whole game with their commentary, and it's out there on YouTube and everything else you want to talk about. And, and my issue with, with, with us filming, you have some coaches, and it happened a couple of years ago with football, where we're using the equipment, and the battery goes dead, or nobody wants to do it. And here, I mean, everyone's gonna have that opportunity to, to see.
And someday, I mean, down the road, if this catches on, you know, some school, you know, you can work this into the video club, and they can announce, it's all, so the students can announce the game live stream.
And they'll package it, and they'll package it up to the students, they'll
Yeah, I like it.
That's what I'd love to see. That's what I'd love to see.
Right. Is Marlboro doing it, right?
They, you don't know because they're the other, they're not
If they're presenting it to their board tonight, too, I believe.
But they're not in yours, they should pretend?
No, they're not.
Right, they're down, orange cam.
Yeah, so they, so, yeah. Like Mr. Brooks is, I don't know, you both, but I believe that they're presenting that tonight also.
Any other discussion?
I guess they have to step in tomorrow, bros. Yeah. The technology is just incredible, how it follows the game.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion out there with Ed, second by Camille. Any other discussion?
Who can people like this ring film? Can they do that? Want to say, hate them on the screen?
Yes.
Pick up the signal button. Do you have one in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Who cares?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anything for the Good Welfare of the District? Their old business or new?
I, I had a question posed to me by a colleague on Ulster Coast about caps and gowns. And I placed a call into you, then I went on vacation. He was wondering, do all of our students buy their own caps and gowns, or is it, uh, do we try to help students?
The expectation is that you're going to buy your cap and gown, but if a student cannot, we take care of it.
You do. You, you work with them.
Yes, there's no one that doesn't get a cap and gown.
Okay, right, thank you.
And truthfully, I think there's been some years where the class has raised money, too, and has kind of supplemented the cost, but sometimes that just depends on the, you know, how active the, the class is in raising money to do. But everyone, yes, there's no doubt.
Thank you.
Anything else for the Good Welfare of the District? Okay, well, the meeting up to public comment.
Thanks for staying.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for our non-aligned, disanalog discussions for salary adjustments. Motion by Ed, seconded by Camille. All in favor? Pose. So Carrie. I want to thank everyone.